Yeah, it's so when now that we're in board docs, you have to click on the section that says approval of September ninth minutes and then that's where the minutes are.
Ah, okay.
After you get under agenda.
Gotcha. Confusing, okay.
Awesome, welcome Quincy.
Hey, how are we doing?
Good. We have twenty people, so I believe we have a quorum, so let us get started.
Okay.
So I'll call the meeting to order, the um the Culture and Climate Subcommittee of Culture, Climate and Behavior Committee of the Oak Park River Forest High School. Board Subcommittee to Order at six thirty-three P M. And we'll have the roll, Keel.
Dr. Ammons.
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Present, sorry about that.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Dr. Starks Turner? She might be late. Ms. Francis? Uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kraft?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, present.
Ms. Jones McLeod?
Present.
Uh, Ms. Grimes?
Present.
Ms. Parelles?
Here.
Good. Ms. Harris?
Present.
Ms. Nitschke?
Here.
Ms. McQueen? Dr. Moore? Ms. Digger?
Present.
Mr. Martin?
Present.
Dr. Sanders?
Here.
Ms. Dixon Spivey?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Here.
Oh, good. Mr. Bectum Cost?
Here.
And Mr. Wachsler?
Here.
Okay. Okay, so seeing a quorum, yay, let us um I would open for the approval of the minutes from the September ninth meeting. Anyone want to move that? Thanks, Sarah.
Second?
Seconded by Frances, it looks like. Frances, did you unmute?
I was about to, but somebody else did, so.
Okay, and, okay, then it's a voice vote.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, awesome. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Um, so the first thing that we're going to do tonight actually is do our circle. And there's been, there's been a lot going on, as per usual, in our community. And tonight, we're actually going to be talking about our racial incident protocol. And fortunately, Dr. Ammons is going to present very short, so we will have much more time to talk. But our circle really, I just want us to, if we're just coming in, and this is only our second meeting, is this our second meeting? Yes. Yeah, this is only our second meeting of the year, so we're still getting to know each other. What our opening question is, is first of all, just say who you are, like, anything you want us to know about you in this moment. And what does the term racial incident protocol mean to you? Racial incident protocol. What does it mean to you? And I'm actually just going to call people on my screen in order. So that it goes succinctly. So Gina, the thing I would think, I'm actually going to answer first tonight, I rarely do this, but I'm going to. I think the thing I would like this group to know about me is that I'm, I'm really grateful that we have the opportunity to do work as a collective. That's a very important piece for me, is that everyone's voices are included in this process and that decisions are made by a group instead of by an individual. And when I hear the term racial incident protocol, it's, I'm still, I'm, I'm in a space right now in my world where I'm struggling with us looking at African-American and Latino students and black, black and brown students as deficient. And so that there's something that needs to be fixed on that end of things, when I feel like when the system is corrupt, we need to fix the system and the pieces and the larger whole. So for me, when I hear racial incident protocol, it, it makes me think like, that there's, that the work needs to be focused more on how do, how do we ensure that the system is set up so that we don't, so that black and brown students aren't having to experience that. So that's where it comes out for me. I'm going to go next to, I'm going to go to my left, which would be Greg Johnson, you're next.
Thank you, and you know, Gina, you always know me, I always like a good systems answer. So when you first asked that question, that's the first thing that popped in my mind, it's faith that our, that we are going to examine racial incidents and the racial climate of the school through a systemic lens. So when these themes come to us, we know how we are going to respond, the process we're going to go through, and the engagement throughout the organization to help make our improvements. So it's, it's the exact opposite of catch as catch can and respond just by the kind of the wiles of the person who seems to find it in front of their face. It's knowing that our organization can tackle this as a whole through a process that we know we are constantly evaluating and, and looking to improve. And there is hope in that. And so we're going to hear some of that today. Thanks.
I was muted, Karen Grimes, you're next.
Yeah, so as a longtime community resident whose children went through these schools, it is, I'm grateful that we are finally at this point in history in our town, doing this kind of process, to be able to look at this systemically and to be able to address it. And so it's sad that it still is at this place where we have to worry about these things, but it's encouraging that we're finally addressing them.
Awesome, thank you. Next is Sarah.
Hi, um, so, am I supposed to introduce myself first, is that right Gina? Uh, I'm Sarah, I'm a mom and a worker and I've been involved in the school for a while, I've got two stuff that's there. Um, so I think a couple of things come to mind with racial incident protocol. One, I think the name is sounds really sanitized. And for an attorney to say that, I think it sort of means something, right? The other piece, I, three things. So that's number one. Number two, it's really frustrating that we need a protocol, right, because that speaks to how frequently this needs to be utilized, that it's natural protocol. And the third is that the acronym is just terrible. And frankly, given the history of violence on black and brown folks, I find it a little disturbing, to be quite honest, so I'm just putting that out there.
Thanks, Sarah. Next is Quincy.
Um, well, what the racial incident protocol means for me is like, a way where we can report racial incidents. Just like, what that means, because I feel like previously, O P R F, a racial incident occurred and you didn't really know what to do as students. Like, who to go to, in terms of, like, staff, a teacher, administration. And so really, the racial incident protocol just allows like, different pathways for different situations to report that.
Thanks, Roxanna.
I'm Roxanna Sanders, I'm Assistant Superintendent for H R, and I've been long involved with grievances on a matter of different subjects. So to me, naming race specifically and creating a mechanism for us to respond to acts of hateful speech, discrimination based on race, is a big step forward. It provides both people who experience emotional or maybe even sometimes physical harm, an opportunity to report it, and for us, as a district, as a system, to have mechanisms to respond to it, hopefully in an effective and productive way.
Thanks, Roxanna Olivia. Thank you.
Oh, um, well, to me, and I think one of the good things about it is that, like some people said before, it makes it the process less confusing and easier to reach out to people and to know who to go to. Yeah.
Thank you, Kyla.
Um, I think with the racial incident protocol, it's a step in the right direction. That as a student, there was a lot of shrugging it off. So now having a protocol, it means that the incidents will be taken seriously.
Thank you, Sherilyn.
Good evening again, Sherilyn Jones McLeod, a parent, community member, Assistant Director of Campus Safety and transplant from another state. The racial equity protocol to me provides the first steps or first of many steps in the right direction to have a way to document incidents of race, racial inequity. And hopefully, it can feed into restorative conversations to try and do some healing in our school community as well as community at large.
Thank you, Susan.
Hi, I'm Susan Stevens, and I'm honored to be here. It's my first meeting of this year. And, um, I guess what I want people to know about me is that I'm retired social worker, and I worked in the, basically in the field of child welfare. And when it was time for me to retire, I really knew I wanted to be, being a systems person, I wanted to work locally and spent, I could say, the last ten years of my career on a corporate officer team working a lot on racial equity in child welfare. So coming to the high school committee that I am, is an opportunity to connect with the community that I've been in for more than thirty years. So I'm really excited to be here and honored to be here, and always feel like, ugh, I wish I knew more. Don't come from an education experience, so I'm always like, oh, I hope I'm making a contribution and not taking up a space that could be used for someone different, better, something, so. And as far as the racial incident protocol, my response to that is that, well, it's progress, given, just, you know, I started out connecting with the high school's committee dealing with the strategic plan. And we had, just to get the word race into the goal was like, a big thing. So that we now have a racial incident protocol is part of kind of breaking new ground. And I think it's, I, I'm excited to see what happens, and breaking new ground can be complicated. Things, I'm expecting things may come up that will surprise all of us, so.
Thank you, Frances.
Hi, I'm Frances Kraft. I'm a former D ninety-seven teacher and a parent of kids who graduated from Oak Park, and I'm with the Equity Team now. I, I am very interested in hearing more about how the protocol will work. I think, I think it is a step forward. What I'm always nervous about is that I want to make sure that, that people within a system are, are building a foundation. You know, how do we restore back to something that hasn't been created yet? So I'm just always kind of very interested in hearing what the district is going to do to give everyone the tools to create those relationships, so that the racial incidents aren't, aren't coming up as often.
Thanks, Lincoln.
Hi, everybody, I'm Lincoln Chandler. I've served O P R F for the last five years as a convener for C C B. And I've been connected to the community for closer to fifteen years, working in various projects related to data and race and equity. I'm, uh, I'm taken that racial incident protocol means different things to different people on this, in this conversation, and everyone's pulling out something different. And that's really interesting to me. What I'm leaning into is the word protocol, in this case. And, you know, I had to look it up because that's what I do. And, and it, and it's referred to as the official procedure or system of rules governing blah, blah, blah. And, and what I thought about is that what will it take to make this the official way of doing things? So we all hear different things when we say racial incident protocol, but I really want to understand what will it take for this to become the way, the singular way the community comes together to address incidents as they occur. And, and aligned with that, how does it change the existing protocols? How does it, you know, what are we going to stop doing now that we are starting to do this racial incident protocol? And then maybe more fundamentally, how do we define what a racial incident is? So what's the green light that enables us to enact this protocol?
Thank you, Janelle.
Good evening, everyone, Janelle Bishop, Lady Dean of Students here at the high school in my twenty-first year. And, um, so I've been around a long time in many, many conversations about race here at the high school. And so my comment is similar to Kyla's, in that having a racial incident protocol finally acknowledges that we have racial incidents that need to be addressed. And so it's a start. And as with anything new, I'm sure that we will assess and reassess and evaluate and make changes as we go. But I feel good about the fact that we have made this start. I must comment on Sarah's remark. I never thought about that acronym in a school that is filled with so many acronyms, and that has now stuck with me. Deans used to be called Student Intervention Directors, which was S I D, the acronym, which was also Sudden Infant Death Syndrome. And I hated that title. So it has done something to me to hear the acronym for this, and I hope we talk about that at some point. I had not, I can't believe, because I'm always coming up with acronyms here at our school, because that's just what we do. So I'm shocked I didn't catch them before now, but that, that is standing out to me as well for obvious reasons.
Thank you. Calvin.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Cal Davis, I live in River Forest. I'm on the River Forest School Board, and I have a son who's a sophomore and a daughter who's in fourth grade. Racial Incident Protocol. I don't really know what that means, and I don't think it should exist. I think we should just have equity. There should be rules and there should be consequences. The problem is, over the years, we've watered down the consequences, so. I mean, if you were to say certain things in school, certain things you'll get in trouble for, and certain things will be a slap on the wrist. So I think we need to promote rules and consequences for everyone, administration, for teachers, for students. And I think once we do that, I think we'll be better off as a society. I mean, if you look back in school in the sixties and seventies, and things like that, the rules and consequences were there. I mean, everyone knows the story about some strict Catholic school teacher with a pocket protector and some weird haircut and those Clark Kent glasses. And he was a mean guy, but guess what? In the end of the day, everybody respected him because he had rules, and all the rules had consequences. Right now, all of our consequences are so watered down that, you know, whether it's grade school, high school, or college, you're pretty much not getting thrown out unless you commit murder. So I think we need to establish consequences. And once everyone sees consequences, I think things will run a little bit smoother. Thank you.
Thanks, Cal. David.
Hello, I'm David Wachsler, Director of Campus Safety. Um, I think it's a, it's a, it's a move in the right direction. I think that some people didn't necessarily know who to talk to or what our policies and procedures were, or how to go about it, or, or how to even put in a complaint. So I definitely see it as a step in the right direction, although in regards to the bigger picture, I wish it was never there to begin with. And I look forward to it not having to be there. And eventually, from a society standpoint, that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Talib. Thank you, David.
Hi, I'm Talib, I'm a senior at O P R F, and I've done a few programs and done a few committees outside of school in the Oak Park River Forest area as well. And to me, the racial incident protocol, I like to believe it kind of showcases the progression of black empowerment within the school, and I think because you're now able to report the incidents that may occur to you, that does give you a sense of power back from the abuser, from the person that has, that is above you within society because of the societal norms that have been in place for so long. So I think it really helps the power balance within our schools, and I think it's, it's going to be seen on a person-to-person basis, and it's going to be used more than we think.
Thank you. Nichelle.
Hi, I'm Nichelle Stigger. I'm, I'm a District ninety-seven Language Arts Teacher, sixth, seventh, and eighth. I'm a mom to a six-year-old, and I'm a graduate of O P R F. And before I heard Talib speak, I was just sort of like, I don't understand. I don't, I don't like the idea of it being called a protocol. I think it sounds white, I think it sounds like it's from the protocol, or I think it sounds like, under the guise of white supremacy, again, we're putting in measures to metrically figure out how many, like, what are we using this data for? I want to know if we actually put some action to it. And then also, though, what it shows me is that there's a lot more work to be done rather than implementing a protocol. It sounds like there needs to be some training and some conversations, real conversations, talking about the elephant in the room rather than making marquees for people to see that O P R F is doing what they're supposed to. And so that is my concern, and I, I believe that Gina invited me to be on this board because I'm never going to I'm going to use my time wisely and I'm going to speak the truth, and we can't just be making protocols and making a list of things and wasting our time in the evening if we aren't actually going to have an action that is putting things forward. And I'm not saying that this isn't, this is a first step, great, but being a graduate from two thousand and now seeing that we actually have like, a piece of paper that says this is a protocol and this is the incident, what's then going to happen? And so you can hear the passion and the power behind my voice, because we can't hide behind a piece of paper. It's not going to do anything. We actually have to talk about the real issue and the real elephant in the room, and we have to determine that together. That's my piece.
Thanks, Nichelle. Melanie, welcome, Melanie.
Hey, guys, how are you? Good evening. I'm sitting here writing a, a story, listening to everybody, but I'm not going to read, not going to go there. Can you repeat the question first, so I make sure I'm on task?
Yep, totally. The question was, first, do you know, anything you want to share with us about who you are, and then, because since it's only our second time meeting, and what does the term racial incident protocol mean to you when you hear that term?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I think it's really important when you say, who are you? I'm a lot of things, but the first thing that I am is a mom. Some people may refer to me as a grizzly bear mom, a honey badger mom, even a helicopter mom. I take that title not lightly, because there's a lot of students on our campus that don't have a mom that has the time to care. Or, and I don't mean that they don't have time as if they don't care for their child, but they're busy with other things, and they need their child to, to perform at a more mature level. So when students come to me, I take it very personally as if they're my kid. And so I come to the school with a grizzly bear, honey badger attitude of any child that's been done wrong, okay? That's the first part about who I am. I've also been an absent mom, okay? I was a young mom, had my kid at, first kid at twenty, leaned into my family to assist me. I did not understand how this whole, you know, educational thing went with my children as I was finishing my own education. So I thank God for family and that they did step in. However, when I did step in, not only was I bullied as an adult, I had to go against a lot of things that I felt like was not for kids, but was for the system. So again, my voice is for the kids. I haven't been, even though I've been involved for so long, I, I haven't been desensitized to what happens behind those closed doors. So that's why it's so important when I tell you I'm a mom first. I've also survived bullying, both as a, a young person and as an adult. I came from the west side of Chicago, so bullying wasn't simple, simply a text or sending pictures. It involved knives, it involved guns, it involved, it's not wanting another student to breathe anymore just because they didn't want someone to think that they were weak or they were a punk. I still experience racism in my community, in my work day to day. I love my community. I love Oak Park, that's why I pay such high taxes. And I tend to look at the high school as such a, I, I have such high standards for our school. So when we have to have conversations like these in twenty twenty about something that should have been implemented years ago, and it has nothing to do with, why are we talking about it? It's just like saying, why do we have law enforcement? Everybody should just not break the law. It's the point of, is everybody going to be valued? Are they going to feel safe when they're in this institution? And I always expect for our institution, with all of its flaws, and within this protocol, to show yes, regardless of what happens in every, because all of our homes, everybody on here, we all have different ways that we're raising our kids, different ways that we're teaching what's right and what's wrong and how to be. But when you go into your church, your place of faith, it has a whole nother set of rules, and you tell your, your kid or your family follows those rules. And I always say, at O P R F, we cannot sit back and think about the three thousand different families and how they're raising their kids. We have to think about what does this institution stand for? What is it we believe in? That when they walk in these doors, this is what, this is what they know we're going to expect of them. We're going to expect rigor, we're going to expect excellence. And we're not going to tolerate any form of racism from within our staff or within our student body. That's, that's the difference. And I think once we stop having that conversation on, well, you know, how do, how do we figure this out? I feel like when we say that, we're trying to, we're trying to make families comfortable with doing what's right. As an institution, and with me and my rose-colored glasses, and the school is like this, this is the way Oak Park River Forest High School is going to operate. So you can either get on board or put your kid in another school, but you're not going to be able to do any kind of racist acts here and not have to pay the consequences for it. And I think, as what Calvin was saying, we're past the learning. You know, this is a learning opportunity. I, I, I think that the school needs to proudly say, we do have a process in place, we're serious about it, we're not just checking the box. And we are going to have actions behind any teachers, in the administration, in the students, anyone in, within this anyone in within this high school community, you will no longer be here if that's what you, what you feel is right and that, and that's what you want to do. Because that's just not part of who we are. That's not our, that's not the culture that we're trying to build.
Thank you, Melanie. Like you wrapped up what I started with, so it was, thank you for that. Um, I think we got everybody on the committee. I um, I just, you know, thank you all for your input there because every, every, every little piece that was added to it. So um, I real quickly, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, am I turning it over to you, Lincoln, and then Doug, and then LeVar, or LeVar and then you?
I can go very quickly and then turn it over to LeVar.
Yeah, because I want us to make sure that we spend the bulk of our time in discussion. So I know LeVar is gonna go very quickly too, so.
I'm happy to do that. So um, and and this is something I can circulate or we can circulate um after the meeting, but just follow.
They have it in, I'm sorry, Lincoln, to interrupt you, but I do think that they have access to the slides that have that, um, it's, it's in the agenda online.
Oh, perfect. Oh, awesome.
Under Circle work, under Circle work is the slides for our, um, yeah, so your last slide there.
Yeah, if we could just go to slide seven.
Yep. Then thank you. I'm sorry to, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I wanted to make sure.
No, not at all, not at all. That's perfect. Okay, so this is just very quickly, uh, just to say that based off, so at the last meeting, um, I spoke a bit about the history of CCB and how we got here and um laid out um some three overarching goals. But what this is, is basically a high-level, you know, overview of the topics that uh we intend to cover over the course of this year. Um, as I said, from year to year, the scope of what we've done has changed and evolved. But given where we are and the things that we want to promote going forward, we'll be talking tonight about the racial incident protocol. And the order may shift around a bit on these things, but um future uh meetings will talk about spring twenty twenty-one planning, what's happening with remote learning and what are we learning along the way, uh, and update on the strategic plan. So um, as you all may recall, um, last year, um, a lot of the strategic plan work became folded into culture and climate, which is consistent with this notion of a racial equity lens being the way that we're viewing how the school operates. Um, we're gonna have an update on the behavior education plan and also an update on some of the indicators that the CCB has put together to look at a school-wide level on how we're doing in terms of uh equity. And then towards the end of the, of the next semester, we will revisit the racial equity policy and talk more about the actions that have been taken. What are our indicators of success that the policy is indeed being implemented? And what are some of the outcomes we see? And then um as part of our duty with CCB, we will be looking at outcomes related to the behavioral education plan and pro- and proposing revisions for the year. So if there are other kind of questions or comments or other things about these topics or other things that you would want us to cover, uh, now would be a great time or even uh after the meeting, you can like let me know. And we will do what we can to work those topics and over the course of this year.
What I think would work really well is if you could email Gil, um, if you see anything on that list that you um want us to dig deeper into or that you think, or something that you'd like included while we're in any of those areas, email Gil so that we have it and we can add it into our next agenda or into our agendas as we move through the process. We wanted to just make sure. Thank you so much, Lincoln. We wanted to make sure that you had an overall understanding of what we were going to be looking at this year, as well as where there's going to be required input for proposed revisions, as well as the input that we're gonna need to give to the board. And we have some dates that are set for that, so just wanted you to be aware. Um, so LeVar, I want to turn it over to you, Dr. Ammons, so you can take us through the um, so you can take us through the racial incident protocol and so we can ask, ask, ask any questions or have any discussions we need to have. And welcome Felicia Starks Turner to the meeting. Um, Gil, I don't know if you see it, saw that she's here, but glad that you're here, Dr. Turner. Okay. Um, Dr. Ammons, it's on you.
All right. Thank you so much, Gina. Do I have?
And I'm timing you, so you have like, you have like fifteen minutes.
Do I have access to share my screen here? Actually, I do.
Yes, you should.
All right. Can you all see what I'm sharing here? All right. So before I get started, I I want to take an opportunity to answer the question. I know I'm on the clock, Gina. Uh, but I would like, like to answer the question myself as to who am I? Um, and what does this uh incident protocol mean? But before uh I get into that, uh, I will say, uh, when I landed here uh last year in the summer and the 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 racial equity policy was handed over to me and I'm, I'm going through all twelve components. And I look at uh what is listed on the policy as the racial incident protocol with the acronym R I P that immediately stood out to me, right? Uh, so from that point on, uh, knowing that it wouldn't be changed at that moment, I was intentional about putting in the reporting part uh in there so that whenever I would um uh present or showcase or speak to this this procedure, it would be the racial incident reporting protocol. Um, we could certainly change incident to racial misconduct. Those are discussions that we could have, but uh, please believe that I've uh, you know, noticed that, acknowledged it and, you know, been intentional in, in, in how I deliver, uh, you know, this uh, this procedure itself. So that is duly noted. Uh, secondly, um, I'm LeVar Ammons, LeVar J. Ammons, um, and I'll take a page out of um Ms. McQueen's book, but a father, husband, um, you know, racial equity, uh, or equity director, um, and a person who has had to, uh, you know, work through um a number of racial incidents. Uh, so this work overall for me is personal. Uh, I was born in Jacksonville, Florida, Duval County, uh, in the inner city of Jacksonville, Florida. So I've had to, you know, come through um, you know, a, a neighborhood and a community and a culture that was uh dangerous, was, was, was uh poisonous, uh, was certainly fraught with, with a, a number of racialized incidents and just having to navigate that. So again, uh, when, when I, when I think about this work uh that I'm charged to do and I have the honor and the privilege to do for a community such as Oak Park and River Forest, again, the work is, the work is personal and it's not something that I take lightly. So uh, I just want you all to know that uh, the intent of myself a- as well as our leadership is to have some real meaningful action uh behind all the things that we're talking about relative to racial equity. Um, when I think about uh especially this position specific and the work being personal and how heavy it can be, we know that uh OPRF has been on the cutting edge when we talk about equity, racial equity, having conversations about race. And with that, I've been able to reach out to a number of, I was literally on a call today with uh eight other first-year equity directors as his positions are trending, right? And people are speaking to how heavy the work is and what needs to be done in various institutions. And the fact that we have a racial incident reporting protocol, people are uh very inquisitive about that, wanting to know, you know, how do we, you know, how, how is this going to, to pan out for us? How do we roll this out? How do we come up with this? So uh, I say all of that to say that the racial incident reporting protocol for me, uh, and I can speak to the systems piece, uh, and and I can echo all the sentiments that everyone spoke to, but ultimately for me, this, this protocol is a protective factor for people of color, um, students, faculty, staff, uh, in the respect that, you know, racism has been around since the inception of America, right? And it's something that we've always had to wrestle with. Um, and it's, you know, we're, we're going to be wrestling with this for quite some time. Uh, so having this racial incident reporting protocol in place is a protective factor. Uh, while we look at our system and try to address our system and address the behaviors and how we treat one another uh in, in our system. So uh, to Talib's point, um, it gives some empowerment to those who have been marginalized and have had to experience those, those um, those situations, uh, or those racial incidents to, you know, make sure that everyone in the institution knows that we now have a process, right? So maybe someone will be able to think, you know, twice before they go into um wanting to, to, to uh explicitly or perhaps implicitly uh put someone in a position to experience a racial incident. So um, with that, I will go ahead and I, I'm, I'm moving.
Dr. Ammons, I just want to say I'm gonna give you the grace of the two minutes because I did not realize in Circle that I did not include you. So I'm sorry about that.
No worries. I appreciate that. I appreciate it. So with that, we'll, we'll go into the racial incident reporting protocol, just the implementation of this procedure. And I'll be brief so we can have some, some discussion. So for today's presentation, again, Gina's already spoke to this, we will review the incident reporting uh policy and the procedure, uh, so we can uh, you know, get some questions out, can answer some questions and just have some, some deep discussion about this, this protocol and what it is we want to see uh out of this, this process. So just some language from the actual uh policy itself, uh, as it relates to board policy seven ten, seven twenty, uh, two colon, two sixty. Uh, we are looking to have a, a process, right? The procedure shall further outline a process for students or any other member of our district community to file complaints uh regarding alleged incidents of, of discrimination or just overall racial misconduct. So when we think about the reporting uh protocol itself, there are two ways or two, two tracks uh of reporting. So there's student reporting and there is uh adult reporting. So uh, we'll start with students. Um, the reporting processes, well, first, they could always come directly to uh, the Office of Equity in Room three seventy-two A, affectionately known by students as the Circle, kind of where all the action happens in between passing periods. Um, from there, once they come to the Office of Equity, there will be the filling out of the racial incident reporting form so we can collect the data on uh, you know, what has happened in a, in a given situation. Uh, once that happens, we go into our fact-finding process, which I'll talk a little bit more uh as we get through the presentation. Uh, secondly, a student can tell a trusted adult. Um, that trusted adult will then be able to come down to the Office of Equity, uh, let us know what happened. Uh, we will get in touch with the student and begin, again, the fact-finding process as we will have to fill out that racial incident reporting form. Uh, there's also the anonymous hotline. So students who uh may experience an instant, an instance of racial misconduct or uh themselves and may want to report for someone else uh can also use this anonymous hotline that goes to a, an outside agency uh who then sends um uh the message to our deans. Once the deans then identify uh this tip as a racial incident, it is forwarded to the Office of Equity so we can start the fact-finding process and documenting what has happened so we can uh get ourselves to, to a point of reconciliation. Uh, why don't you just briefly click on the reporting flowchart for students, as well as uh students uh reporting to adults. So as I just mentioned, uh, those steps or those options that students have. Uh, if you're reporting an incident as a student, you have four options. Again, reporting directly to the Office of Equity. Um, uh, tell the trusted adult who will then come to the Office of Equity. And then there is the twenty-four hour anonymous hotline. And even on this flyer here, students will be able to uh click this QR code that will take them directly to the racial incident reporting form. Once that form is completed, it then alerts uh myself as well as Ms. Melody Brown, who is the Executive Assistant in the Office of Equity. And we can start that fact-finding process when we get that information by contacting the students, uh, getting in touch with deans, so forth and so on. Um, on the right-hand side here, if an adult is uh having a student report to them, as I mentioned before, they would just come directly to the Office of Equity. We would then start that fact-finding process. For adults, um, so again, adults, if they have experienced the instance of racial misconduct, they can come directly and report to the Office of Equity, or they can report to one of the uh employee racial incident managers, which uh would be uh Dr. Roxanna Sanders and Mr. Greg Johnson. Um, for the adult uh reporting, a similar flowchart is available. Um, and it just shows you the direction of where you can go as an adult here in the building to make your report of racial misconduct. Uh, the racial incident reporting forms themselves are on our website. So uh both on the uh public-facing side as well as the internet for um the adults and, and also for the student-facing uh landing page. So uh all of these um uh links will be under quick links, uh where we'll have the actual flowchart and then the uh racial incident reporting form. Can everyone see what I'm sharing? The, the internet page, okay. And just to give you an idea, once you click on the racial incident reporting form itself, it will take you to uh the singular form. Where you put down your name, whom are you reporting for, um, you know, who was impacted by this event? If you don't know the names, you know, what information can you tell us about that impacted person? Where did the incident actually happen? Uh, any other specific details, time, date, uh description, uh, were there any other witnesses? Um, with, with this uh, with this form here and the data that we'd be collecting on this form over time, we'd be able to see if there were any trends in terms of uh where these events are taking place, to whom are they taking place to, uh, and really begin to look at uh whether it be more professional development or any other measures that we need to take to try to mitigate uh these uh, these incidents. So in response to racial misconduct, uh, first of all, the Office of Equity will receive all complaints regarding racial misconduct, whether they come from students, faculty, uh, staff, parents and so forth. Uh, we really want to ensure that the reporting party and the responding party have access to school and community resources. Once we are in front of the student and sitting down, we want to make sure that they are safe. Uh, we also want to ensure that the reporting party has guidance on how to contact campus uh security, uh, law enforcement, but again, just i- if, if that's appropriate. Uh, but we want to make sure that uh the students are, are, are feeling safe and have access to, to any resources available. Uh, and that also extends to our social workers, counselors, school sites and so forth. Uh, of course, we will contact parents of all parties involved, uh, just to inform them of the incident so they will have that information. And then we'll be, of course, in our fact-finding process. So that's where the Office of Equity, along with the uh, the deans, will partner to, you know, get to the bottom of what exactly happened. Uh, so at that point, you know, the student will, will, all the deans will be notified. But then we'll work specifically with the deans who have those students on their case loans to get down to the, the matter of, of what happened. Um, next, uh, we have the responsibility of determining whether or not the complaint i- is substantiated, right? Is this, is this an instance of, of implicit um racial misconduct? Uh, or is this uh an outright malicious or explicit uh intentional uh racial, uh racial attack? So, you know, that, that will all determine, you know, the outcome uh for those who have committed uh the alleged uh racial misconduct. And then we want to inform the party, to the extent possible, the, the reporting party, to the extent possible, uh, of the outcome um, in terms of uh, of how the situation has been handled and, and how will we move forward? Um, and then, of course, after that, we will follow up with both parties uh after the resolutions um as, as needed. So uh initially, we will do uh one follow-up and touch base with both uh the reporting and responding party. Um, and then if need be, that responding party or that reporting party, if there needs to be more follow-up, we'll, we'll make sure we put the appropriate uh resources in place for, for, for those individuals. Uh, once we get to a, a place of having documented our uh racial incidents, uh, we have um uh gotten to the, to the, the core of the issue and what has actually happened and we have all of our facts in line. Uh, now it's time to speak to racial healing strategies. Uh, of course, you know, as our institution is striving to be a more uh restorative institution, we want to certainly be focused on the restorative process. So some of the strategies we've used, uh, even, you know, last year in the, in the fourth quarter, uh, peace circles, uh racial equity coaching, uh, to have people uh touch base with those coaches to get more support. Um, there've been students with uh parents, teachers, uh, students, uh, student to student, and it's a number of combinations of those types of meetings. We've also used impact letters, uh, when we talk about the restorative process, just because, of course, those who have been uh harmed by a racial incident, we can't necessarily um, uh, force them to sit down in a space as they may not be ready to do that with the person because of harm. So uh, a few times we have used uh impact letters from those who have been impacted uh to read to the um to the person or the, the folks who have committed the racial misconduct uh in order to process, you know, their impact uh of their actions on, on the person uh that wrote, that wrote the letter. And then going forward, uh, thinking about behavior corrections, things we'll have to consider. Uh, the racial misconduct itself, you know, is this a malicious uh instance of racial misconduct, an explicit uh uh circumstance? Or, or is this just a matter of? Or is this just a matter of racial disconsciousness and something being said implicitly and not understanding the impact of what was said or what was done? Of course, retaliation cannot be tolerated relative to someone making a report about a racial incident and then feeling threatened by someone who is the responding party. And also what to think about intentionally dishonest complaints and being sure that we hold those folks accountable who would do something such as that. To the right there, you can see just the fact finding collaboration, whether we're talking about the student, adults. These are the collaborators, whether it be the Office of Equity, the deans, as well as the employee racial incident response managers. That's that collaborative group that will, you know, work in the fact finding process and ultimately determine the outcome for those who have committed any racial misconduct. And as far as students, actions will be taken in accordance with our behavior education plan. And for employees, we'll certainly look at the board policy in terms of taking action against employees who have committed racial misconduct. So with that, I think I got that done in what, fifteen minutes, thirteen minutes?
That was awesome. Thank you, Dr. Ammons. Thank you.
No questions?
And I know we're gonna, we're gonna, I want to go to questions. I don't know if we, we don't have the function to raise our hand here, but just, I want to make sure we get questions answered first and then see if there's any further discussion, comments, or like recommendations for what it already looks like. So I see that Melanie, I see you're already unmuted. Do you have a question?
It's, I think it's more so a suggestion to what I've seen already and a concern. So the first is, when we talk about a trusted adult, I want to make sure, I don't want it to be a barrier to the student making the report. I feel like a lot of times when students come to adults, they want to kind of talk it through. And sometimes they're deterred and say, well, that's not, that's not really what you want to do. So I feel when someone says they want to make a report, it's the trusted adult's responsibility to follow through and make the report. And then also in looking at the form, our kids are smart. All of our high schools that are on here, I know you guys are brilliant. But when we ask students to recall situations, they do not have detail. It's not very helpful. And so I think we do need to try to be a bit more granular in what we're asking them to pinpoint situations. Like, for example, was there an adult around? If it was, because when I was listening to it, it sounded more like this was just a student to student interaction. Was there an adult around or was it with that adult? So was it a teacher? Was it a student? Was it an employee? Was it your dean? Was it your coach? Were you in class? What class was it? What period was it? Was it during lunch? Things like that, I think, would help the students better or even the adults recall what happened because, again, they're not very detailed with things. And I think that would just help narrow down exactly who we need to bring to the table.
Sure. And then into that, Ms. McQueen, I will say that once the report comes in, those are the conversations we'll have in order to tease those pieces out. I think the, the challenge in having a document such as this and wanting folks to fill this out in the midst of experiencing a traumatic racial experience. I don't, I don't necessarily want people to get lost in trying to highlight every single detail that happened in a form. I would rather have that conversation, right? And be able to tease those, tease those things out. But well taken.
And that, I was thinking about the students or adults even in the building who are not comfortable with filling out a form, who are already feeling like so marginalized that they're not at a space where they're comfortable with that. Like, how do we develop the space that people know that they can? You know, like, even if you're not comfortable filling out this form, please talk to any of the adult, any trusted adult.
Exactly. That's why I was saying, when they come to make the report, take it. Don't talk them out of doing it.
Totally. And Sarah, thank you. We can raise our hand. You just have to click on panel participants and then there's an option to raise your hand. So if we do that, if you have something to say and you raise your hand that way, then that way I can like make a list and make sure I don't miss anybody. But otherwise, you can just raise your hand and I can call on you because I can see you while right now as well. But thank you, Sarah. So any, who's next? I know that there are more questions slash comments. Go ahead, Cal.
I think that's a great presentation. But we really have to, I didn't really hear any rules in there. I just heard kind of procedures of if something happens, we'll document it and things like that. But there's really got to be like a consequence of some sort. I'm not saying like expel kids or anything like that or fire teachers or anything like that. But there's really got to be some type of consequence. I did appreciate the page where, you know, parent teacher involvement, you have to talk to parents. And, you know, I went to St. Joseph High School in Westchester. I'm from Maywood. St. Joseph was eight percent black when I got there. And it was pretty bad. The Cicero kids put swastikas on the Jewish teachers' apples and they put them on their desk and things like that. I had no idea what they were doing until I just heard a Jewish teacher scream and, you know, go into all kinds of upsetness. So, but when I found the kid that did it, there was a consequence for him. There was a consequence for him and it was like parental types of things. They involved that and then, you know, you have to involve the teachers to let everybody know what equity is. Other teachers that weren't Jewish actually felt bad for this guy once they talked to everyone and kind of figured it out. So, I mean, I appreciated that page where we have to have parents involved because parents have to let their kids know that you represent me when you go to school. So there's no acting out in any type of way, shape or form. And teachers who have been doing it for a while, you know, things have kind of been watered down over the years and things like that. They need to know it's kind of a new day. So you got to kind of step up your game and you got to be, you know, looking out for things. My son's a sophomore now. Last year he was bullied in a class. He was bullied in a class with a teacher and a teacher assistant. And no one saw it. And he sat in the second row in the classroom. So it's, I mean, it's, I appreciated that page where the teachers got to be involved. They have to be retrained. The parents have to be involved. They have to know what the expectations are for their child when they come to school. And then the child has to know. And once you have everybody on the same page, it moves a lot smoother. But if we don't talk to any parents, if we don't talk to any teachers and we just sit here and talk every month, we're not going to accomplish anything. Thank you.
Thanks, Cal. I see Cheryl Lynn. Cheryl Lynn, you have your hand?
Um, I just wanted to kind of, I don't want to say address, but bring together Mr. Davis's point. This protocol is part of a larger effort at OPRF. And so the consequences piece, if you want to call them consequences, are not, don't necessarily live with Dr. Ammons. That is not his role. His role is to try and create a system so that all of the other pieces that we're working on, the restorative, the revision of our disciplinary systems, you know, all of those pieces need to come together. So it's not just you did this and Dr. Ammons is the one to lay down the law, so to speak. It needs to be a cohesive effort. And to your point about training, there does, there needs to be immense training for our community at large, for our students, for our teachers, for our staff. Training around who is a trusted adult? If, do you want to, you know, when you ride on an airplane, they ask you if you want to sit in the emergency seat. And if you say no, you move your seat. So we need to get people who are comfortable being the trusted adult. There are people who are not comfortable receiving this information or they don't, they don't know how to react. So we need to create pockets of people who can be, who can act in that manner in a safe space for children. And even a safe space for adults, like Dr. Sanders is HR for adults. So we feel safe going there. But if she's out of the building or in a training, we need community of safe spaces in the building for people, children, adults, our buildings and grounds folks, whoever is impacted. It could be a community member who experienced something from a student, one of our students. We need safe spaces in the building with trusted adults. We perhaps need peers because our students, as Gina said, are very intelligent and very compassionate. So we should be training our students to be trusted peers. So I think that this is, as I stated in the beginning, a piece of the puzzle. It's not the end all be all by any means. But it needs to, all of our pieces, I feel like, I've only been here a year, but we have all of these pieces. We need to start to bring them all together so that the racial incident protocol flows into the behavior intervention plans and, you know, so that we function as one whole school and not a school of disjointed pieces.
Thank you, Cheryl Lynn. I see a couple of adult hands, but I actually want to go to the students because like their voices in this space are really critical. And I just wanted to see if the students had any comments or anything that's coming up for them as we're, you know, it seems, I don't, what can happen in our space is we can talk around the students as if they're not here, right? Like, so make, let's make sure they have trusted adults. Well, the students are right here. Like, they can tell us what they, what they need. Like, their voices are like more critical than ours to me. That's where I am. So students, we would love to prioritize your voices in this space if you have anything to add or to contribute.
I would like to say something if that's okay.
Please, go ahead, Ray. Quincy.
Well, going back to like the repercussions of like racial incidents and like if something like this were to occur. I just want a little bit of closure from like a student perspective. Like, because I'm like, I know in the past when racial incidents have occurred, like, of course, we all know about them. It's hard to not know about them. But, um, like, we just kind of get left in the dark about what happens after that. And from a student perspective, it kind of feels like nothing happened because we don't know what happened. And so like from a student, we're just like, oh, they just didn't care. And so they said that they're going to work on it and then they didn't really do anything. And so I was just like, I don't really have the answer to how we can like make sure students don't feel that way or even, you know, staff doesn't feel that way if they do. But, I mean, I would like to see something happen where we know, like, we trust that you guys actually did, you know, work on it. You guys applied this, you know, protocol and you took the proper steps to make sure that, you know, the cause met the effect and, you know, that you handled it. But I don't like what we have, what we've gone through previously where it's just all, you know, confidential. And we can't, we don't know what happened. So, yeah.
Thanks, Quincy. And I see Talib's hands up too.
Um, yeah, I really agree with Quincy. I think a big part of this is actually being, this, a lot of it is for students to be able to have that closure that they're seeking, which is why they're following this report so that doesn't happen again. But they know that for themselves at least, that what has happened to them is not in vain, that it's happening and it's stopping and that's not going to happen to other people. And I've been on other committees, as I've said, and there have been a lot of racial incidents within our school in the four years I've been here. And from what I've seen, I've been kind of constantly disappointed with what has happened. I know not a lot can be said about what happens in specific to those students because students have the rights of privacy when it comes to matters like those. But I was asked to be in a restorative circle for one of the students and that was part of his, we could say punishment. And to me, it was, it was mostly a joke. And I explained those concerns because we didn't even go into what he did. I know Quincy was there and it was, it was, it was really disappointing. And it really showed the white privilege that goes on in our schools because if a black kid were to do something that affected the entire school, there have been a lot more severe punishments than just holding hands in a restorative circle that does nothing. So, my piece.
I, I just have to jump in here for a second, Talib, because, and Quincy, thank you both for your input there. Because the, the function of a restorative process and not just a peace circle, but a restorative conference, which LeVar, which is a question that I actually have for you. If there was a restorative conference, there is an actual understanding of a retelling of what happens. There's an actual scripted procedure in process, right? That you would do and is part of a restorative conference, which is different than a peace circle. And in that process, the people that have been harmed actually have the opportunity to express what will actually repair the harm. And what I'm hearing is that no conversation like that happened for Talib and the circle that he was in, that the people who were harmed actually had an opportunity to express. And the group as a collective come up with, how do we repair this harm, right? So when we're, so I can't, I can't help but just for a second, just jump in on this restorative piece because what we want is for our system to be restorative. What that means is it actually has to be backed up with the actions that are actually restorative. So I just, I want to throw that in there because there's a, it's an important, it's an important distinction. Because if we're, there's a difference between thinking that you're applying a restorative framework, then becoming restorative people and making the system restorative so that people actually have their harms redressed. So I wanted to throw that in there. I see some other hands up, so I'm going to go in the order that they came in this time. It was Lincoln, Janelle, Cheryl Lynn, and then Felicia.
Thanks, Gina. Yeah, I was just gonna say, just to build on that point. I appreciate the breadth of the protocol and the fact that it does include the adults in the building, which I think is very important. But I think the best plan, if not properly implemented, will not, will not succeed. So I do think there has to be real care given to the training and the education associated with this so that when we say we are doing restorative practices, they are being carried out as intended. And, and the question I had is, you know, just kind of thinking about the faculty piece in particular. How does this protocol, does it, so how does this, how does this protocol as implemented for faculty relate to existing grievance protocols? This was a question that came up, I think, in the last meeting. But given that there's already processes in place when incidents occur, how does the racial impact response protocol change that or affect that?
And Dr. Sanders, or Greg, were you about to say something?
I was gonna say either way, I just, I want to ask though, Gina, do you want us to respond to that right now? Or I want to make sure we're responding to comments?
The difference piece, I would like to, I would love, I would love for us to have, for that, for the committee to have some light shed on that. Yes.
Yeah, so, so two things. The racial incident protocol, when that first comes about, we're going to run through that process. It's not like, it's not like an incident would occur and then we would, we would stop any sort of the racial incident protocol work that LeVar was talking about in order to pursue something else. However, if we do have something that would fall into an evaluative or a disciplinary conversation for, for an adult specifically, which I think is at the heart of your question, Lincoln, right? If we do have something like that, absolutely, we have to follow through those protocols. And Roxanna can talk about that as our, as our building's previous manager. But it, it's not like other policies that we have in place to kind of govern and respond to actions from faculty and staff go by the wayside because we happen to have this, have this process here and work in conjunction with it.
Yeah, there's that back in the staff. I want to go in order. Talib, is your hand up again? I'm just making sure. Okay. Nowhere's Janelle and then Cheryl Lynn and then Felicia.
Thank you. First, Calvin, I just want to say hello to a fellow May Woody. But I just, I did want to speak to the, the, what can come, what can become a conflicting perspective, philosophy, viewpoint on how to react and respond as a school when students in particular commit a, an incident that is of a racist nature. And the, on the one hand, desire for, you know, very heavy consequences to be doled out. And on the other hand, the desire to be less punitive in our response to discipline. And so that's, that's a difficult one because there, there are a lot of emotions there. There is a lot of harm done when it comes to racial incidents. And with that harm can come a desire for the, um, offender to suffer, you know, consequences to the greatest extent possible. That is not in line with how we as a district have said that we would like to approach issues of, of bad behavior, poor choices of our young people. And so I want us to be conscious of this conversation because I see a conflict there. Um, Calvin, you mentioned it today, but I, I, I hear it pretty frequently about how we better make sure we react to racial incidents. But if it's something else, we should be being less punitive. And so as a district, as a, as a committee, I want us to just be thinking about that. Um, because if we say we wanna be restorative and less punitive, we can't pick and choose what that looks like and, and where we apply that philosophy. So, I just want that, it's hard for me, just as a black person, dealing with incidents of racism that kids experience, um, and how we choose to respond. But as a district, we have said that we have a particular philosophy about how we view discipline issues. And I just want us to be mindful of that conflict to, to have that conversation ongoing.
Thanks Janelle. Next was, um, Felicia. Oh no, I'm sorry, Sherilyn, then Felicia, my bad. I had, I knew I wrote it down for a reason.
Gina, I, I just didn't lower my hand. I'm good.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, Felicia.
Hi, um, good evening everyone. I would just first like to say, um, Dr. Ames, as a parent, um, I really appreciate seeing the form. Um, it's comforting to me as a parent that there's a process like this in place, um, you know, should my student, you know, have an issue. And I also really appreciate the voice of the students. Um, what I was hearing is that there is a lack of trust. And it reminds me of when, in District Ninety Seven, when we created our bullying incident report form. Uh, I always find that, that students keep it real for me. And, um, it was actually based on their input, uh, because a lot of, we, that we made revisions, a lot of students were anonymously submitting the bullying report forms. And basically they were saying, we don't trust that it's going to be taken seriously and that people are going to respond accordingly. So based on their input, we made some revisions to the form. One of them is that at the end, they got to make a selection about some things that they would like to see happen. Like, how, how would you like this resolved? And, um, it kinda gave us an idea about where they were and what they were looking for. And the students helped give us input on that. So, we, um, did a big push on culture, climate, just in the district. We did a big push on the explaining the form, you know, at each school, really making it prominent. And we found that over the years, it, things aren't perfect, but we found that more students are, um, putting their name down on the form and not reporting anonymously so that we can actually take action on, um, the report that they are, you know, filling out. So, I appreciate that someone said that this is a part of a larger context, um, and to keep it in perspective. Um, so anyway, those are just, you know, some of my thoughts and again, thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Um, Melanie, did you have your hand? Or no, you were just agreeing. And Quincy, Quincy, go ahead please.
Um, well, I wanted to talk about, um, the anonymous part of the racial incident reporting form. And then also the restorative circles that we mentioned earlier. Um, well, talking about the anonymous part of the racial incident reporting form, I understand, um, Felicia, where you're coming from. Of laughing about like, people shouldn't report it anonymously. However, like, reporting anonymously, sometimes you don't feel comfortable reporting some incidents anonymously. And, you know, when you need to find more information and you need the name, then that's when I feel like the name should be included. You're in, the person reporting the form, his name should be included. However, I don't feel like it's completely necessary to have the name in there. Because, for whatever reason it may be, I mean, like, maybe it's, you know, they feel that they'll be like, oh, you know, this person said this about you. They just don't wanna have that information out there. And, you know, I, I, like I said at the beginning, I completely understand where you're coming from. But I just don't think that having, making this, making the person fill out the reporting form, have their name on it is the best idea. Um, but really what I wanted to talk about was the, um, restorative circle. Um, the restorative circle and the peace circle, I, I really don't think the way that they're set up right now that they really solve the problem, um, in terms of racial incidents that we see at OPRF. Um, it's a lot of, um, or at least from my experience, um, as Talib mentioned earlier, I was a part of, you know, peace circle. Um, I, it was a lot of just kinda dancing around the topic rather than learning from it and growing from it. Um, and if that's, you know, the typical outline of what a peace circle or restorative circle is in terms of racial incidents, uh, then I think that we need to change the way that we have peace circles or restorative circles or just find an alternative. Um, because that, it doesn't help. It's really just a slap on the wrist, you know, in my opinion. Like, oh, you did this really bad thing, so just come to this meeting for two hours and then you're off the hood, you know? Um, and so I really don't think that the restorative circle really cuts it for me. Um, and like I said, one of the options for that could be to really like talk, like just be direct and be, like you said earlier, um, you know, have the people affected by the racial incident speak out and talk about how they felt about the incident. But in addition, you know, talk about, instead of justifying, you know, the person who committed this incident, you know, justifying his actions or, you know, giving a little sob backstory. I would rather just, you know, just be direct and say that this is, cannot be tolerated and that this is wrong. If that's how we truly feel. Um, and like, you know, we can't just give, you know, a sob story. We can't just justify the person's actions if they happen to do these things in a restorative circle. If we're gonna have a restorative circle, we need to be more direct. And if we're gonna keep that, then we need to stop dancing around the topic and tell them that we will not tolerate this thing and, you know, build from there.
Well, just to principally appreciate, um, appreciate the students' voices in this space so much and you saying that because you're hitting on what I, I feel like I bring up at every board meeting Quincy, is that we just dance around this topic like we just don't wanna dig in deep like we actually need to. And, um, the truth is, peace circles and restorative conferencing are two totally different things. And if we're doing restorative, you know, like if we are actually becoming restorative, then uh, the system needs to understand what that means, right? Because it's not a slap on the wrist. It's not a, um, you know, uh, what I hear so clearly Cal saying is we need consequences. Yeah, like restorative does not mean that there are lack of consequences. Like, you don't only get to have a conversation about like how it impacted people. There are other things that are involved in what happens when we're doing this. But you don't only get the consequence so that you don't get to have the full measure of, wow, when I said that, look at the harm that it caused to my, to this community that I'm saying I want to be a part of, right? And I think Frances said it earlier, that the pieces, we want to establish that there is a community, you don't have anything to restore if you haven't built it in the first place, right? And so the pieces that Felicia brought up about the trust, it's like when the, when, when you all, Greg and LeVar and, um, Dr. P, um, Dr. Good Adams, when she watches this, um, which we know are very much nice, we definitely do. Um, but when, but when you're having those conversations, Janelle, too, like all of the people that are working, that are working directly inside the system and like Sarah on the board, like we're having those conversations. It's like, wha- what is it we're trying to repair? Like, if we're being restorative, it's about repairing harm. Are we actually repairing the harm? Now, I have to say, Dr. Ames, that I'm actually appreciative of this report. Um, and I'm appreciative of the protocol and how it's laid out to be, you know, so that there is a system of addressing. But we haven't, th- this is what I said the last meeting that we were together, we haven't addressed the vacuum, right? So what we're talking about is if something happens, oh, this is what we're gonna do. Let us rush to action. Let's get our things. We got our ducks in order. We now know, right? We now know what we're gonna, our process is gonna be. But we're not hitting that back end of, like, uh, Melanie said, what is the culture that we're creating that says that this is not acceptable in the first place? That people know if you are, um, if you are a faculty, a staff, a student, any person in the building of, or in our district, of District Two Hundred, that any racial inappropriateness, any racial harm is completely and totally unacceptable. And then how do you build that culture? So that's what I wanna hear more about. How's that culture being built, right? How is that culture being built so that we are, so that, that harm becomes like, oh, then the people who do commit the harm, then they do feel like they're outside of the norm. Right now, I don't know that they feel like they're outside of the norm. So, I'm not gonna talk the whole time because I chair this committee and that would just be like, you know, monopolizing my time. But I can't, I can't help but not say these things that like, let us, let us get to the root of it. What's going to prevent students from experiencing racism in school, however they experience? What's gonna prevent our black and brown adults in the building from experiencing racism? Like, what is going to stop the racism from occurring? And I'm talking interpersonal, institutional, structural, uh, socio-psychological, all of the aspects of it. How do we get behind that? And if we're a culture, climate, and behavior committee, then we're gonna have to do some digging around that behind. And that's what I'm hoping our committee can do, right, as we begin to dig in more. So I see two hands up. I'm gonna go to Susan, she hasn't spoken yet, and then Sherilyn.
Is Susan going?
Yeah, yes, I'm going. I just had to unmute my, okay. Um, so, um, what was just brought up, what you just said Gina, um, connected me to, um, one of the things that that kind of, um, triggered, oh, implicit, the word implicit in, in the, um, implicit or explicit misconduct or racial misconduct. And I think that gets to this issue around fear. I can see, one of the things that I think people do, being white, is they get really defensive about, oh, I've done a racist thing. And I really think that the framework of implicit bias is powerful. Because we have grown up, all of us in a racist society. We have so much bias, we don't even know, we don't see it, we don't know it. We, um, it's just all over. It's all in us. And so kids, of course, pick up, pick up all of this stuff and, and don't have brains yet even. Or practice at, um, or have many of them learned the process of going, oh, um, detaching from something, like, oh, I've done something wrong, oh no. But I'm bigger than that. There's something here for me to learn. I'm in a safe space. I have adults who care for me. I have, I can repair. Just this whole concept of restorative culture is so, it's such a big thing to shift into, um, I think. And, um, building skill for, um, being able to separate out all the pieces of a person, like, oh, I'm really scared or, um, and I don't, I can't even say that. Um, or I don't even know that. I don't understand this race thing. Um, so, I just, I just think that we probably have families who have done a lot of, a lot of white families who've done a lot of work in their families with their kids and this will be fine. But for other, and, and know and wanna be and understand this culture that we wanna build. It's for the kids and the families and the, I don't know, for all of us to work through this implicit bias that is gonna come out, I think. And people are gonna make mistakes and how do we handle that as a community from a perspective? I can just see the headlines and the distortions that will come out and it worries me. So, there I am. Yeah, Susan, you speak to a piece, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Sherilyn and then I'm gonna wrap this up because we're, um, almost out of time. And I'm gonna hit, thank you Susan.
Um, I'm gonna try and be brief. Uh, so many things have triggered, uh, thoughts for me. But, you know, as we are a teaching and learning institution, we should be building the acceptable culture and not just accepting the culture that is dominant in our community. And, you know, if we're going to move to restorative or, as Gina stated, if there's nothing to restore, then we can't have a restorative conversation. And so, going all the way back to our base, we need to create a climate and culture in the building that is loving and kind and teaching, teaching the students how to greet each other. I, I know, I see Kyla every morning when we had in-person school. But being that trusted adult doesn't just mean I did this training and I sit in my office and whenever Kyla has a problem, she can come. Knowing that every morning I'm gonna be at the door greeting her and saying, good morning, how's your day? That makes her feel comfortable enough to say, hey, Mr. Kyla, can I pull you to the side for a second to give you this information? And so truly creating this atmosphere in our school where nothing, um, that is negative or disparaging is acceptable from anyone, whether it's staff, students, whoever. Um, and then really deciding on what are our pillars, what are we standing on in OPRF? So that when people come to our school, they could be community members, they can have a disagree, they can not agree with anything, but this is what we stand on and we're not backing down from it because as a community, we've agreed on these pillars and this is what we're gonna stand on. I think once we can get there and to Melody, uh, Melanie's point, be mama papa bears and really care, love our kids, care for them, every one of them, regardless of race, regardless of if they made mistakes, whatever they've done, that's what we're there for. We're there to teach them how to improve, how to be the best humans they can be. And so if we can get to that baseline of building our own pillars and what we stand for as OPRF, then we can have these protocols because we already know what our base is. We already know what we stand on. And so this is directly in opposition of what we stand on. Now we need a protocol to try and bring you back over to these pillars. This is OPRF. I don't know what you guys are doing, but this is what we do. That's it. I'm, I'm done for the day.
It's perfect, it's a perfect way to end Sherilyn because the, the, um, the, uh, we have one more minute, Michelle, make it fast.
I'm just saying, like, let, we need to really listen to Sherilyn because she has it to a point. And it's, as far as coming from a person who works, works in a microcosm in a classroom, that's what I do with my students. We had a student who is autistic and n- now, I said, there is no one in this classroom who's going to mistreat this student. They may, there may be outbursts, they, she may look different, yada, 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 but here is how we treat her, period. And we have to lead with that. So Sherilyn, yes, I think what you, what you are saying is one hundred percent true and valid.
Yeah, and so, I, I just, um, you all hit the piece of what we have to create, right? And like what we get to support as we, we have a racial equity policy. We have that policy for a reason. And the one thing I'm gonna say is like, it's, it's, as we begin to dismantle white supremacy culture and the ideologies behind that, the right to comfort, the right to, you know, certain ways are the only ways to do things. Like, as we begin to have those conversations, which we will, because you all get to have me as your chair of Culture and Climate and Behavior Committee. So you're stuck with that conversation. Um, but, um, appreciative of the work that you all are starting to put forward here, LeVar, Dr. Ames and, um, Greg, right? And then, and we need to take it next level because like, um, Michelle said at the beginning, this is about the action. And we're hearing, what we're hearing from the stu- students and what they're saying in our space here. So I wanna thank you all for tonight. Um, we will see you at the next meeting and so appreciate your input. If you have things, remember, um, our agenda still is on the, on the line, out on the line. And if you have things that you want to dig deeper into based on what that presentation, that, the information Lincoln shared, please email Gail. So we can dig, but we are going to, um, really start to step into it. So, I just wanna just point out that right to comfort is one of those things that's immediately gonna be out the window. So.
Can I leave something with the group really quick that I'd like for everybody to kinda meditate on? Um, Susan, you said something so important. Um, people do make mistakes, but I think we all need to understand that, um, some people are not sorry. They're not sorry for those mistakes. So how do we address that? I've had people who've made mistakes and they want to learn and they apologize and there are people that don't.
And that's why we have policies and systems, right? That's why we have, we create that culture as a baseline. So thank you Melanie. Thank you everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Be well. Wear a mask, wear a mask.
Thank you.
Thanks Cal.
Night everyone.
Good night everybody, thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.